The notice required been provided to the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice is promptly given, said notice have been transmitted to the area news and Starlight on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, as well as posting on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office. May I have the roll call, please? Councilmember Sumati?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Good, asking for our roll call, McCray?
Here.
Storch?
Here.
Vice President Pocketing?
Here.
Council President Mills-Rice?
Present.
We have six minutes present, let me ask him we have a form to see. Can everybody silence their phones, please? Please rise to the questions, either remain standing for the invitation.
(Inaudible)
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and a lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace, amen.
Now, I need to approve the minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting of January 7th, 2019?
Motion.
It's been moved a second, probably second minute, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Communications from the mayor, Mr. Clerk, is there any communication from the mayor?
Yes, the honor of the Mayor Adrian O'Math will present a proclamation to Ms. Julie Waters of the French School of Music. I am going to read this proclamation. The City of Plainfield hereby issue this proclamation to Ms. Julie Waters in the French School of Music. The City of Plainfield proud to recognize the achievements of Ms. Julie Waters and celebrate the contribution she and her late husband, Mr. Stephen Waters, in the French School of Music, having made and developed and created music students, musicians, and teachers of music in the Plainfield City. And whereas the French School of Music was founded in December 1927 by the now concert pianist, Ms. Yvonne Combs and Ms. Helen Fiefer, preceded by a letter of recognition by independent pianists and composers Sergej Brokodov, Ms. Combs, and Ms. Fiefer left Switzerland in 1927 to establish a music school in Plainfield. Later joined by Ms. Michelle Sequin and Ms. Peggy Glazer, they taught not only piano, but solfège lessons, as well as French language in the French rhythmic dance movement. Whereas the French School of Music was founded in the principle that anyone, children and novices included, can learn the art of music. Originally located at 514 Park Avenue, the school later moved to 210 West H Street as it had a row of its space. Whereas Mr. Stephen Waters, a student of the French School of Music since the age of nine, cherished and valued the musical training he received from Ms. Combs. After graduating high school, Stephen went on to study in Oregon and piano abroad at the Geneva Conservatory in Switzerland for two years and returned to the United States to attend Westminster Choir College in Princeton, New Jersey. At Ms. Combs' request, he began teaching at the school. And whereas Ms. Combs desired for Mr. Waters to continue leading the school after her passing, in 1992 Stephen and Julie Waters purchased the building, then managed the business successfully until this latest passing in May 2014. Whereas Ms. Julie Waters, now owner and director of the French School of Music, continues to ensure the legacy of the school's mission to continue the same standards of excellence in piano teaching and music instruction, who is dedicated and experienced teachers welcoming students of all ages and skills levels. Whereas, the French School of Music has welcomed hundreds of students through its doors, students have won prestigious competitions performed at Carnegie, Recital Hall, Avery Fisher Hall, and Town Hall in New York City, as well as concerting throughout the world. And whereas, the French School of Music is widely recognized for creating students with distinguished careers as composers and educators. Many of these musicians credit their success to the work of supportive and dedicated teachers Yvonne Combs, Helen Fiefer, Michelle Sequin, Stephen Waters, who laid the foundation for others to build upon. Whereas Ms. Julie Waters' work trilogy with a team of highly qualified instructors carry on the school's heritage and penetrate its growth. Ms. Waters was also instrumental in funding the Plainfield Arts Council, which promotes and celebrates the arts in Plainfield, highlighting its variety, multiculturalism, and rich historical legacy, support community growth and engagement with arts and culture. Now therefore, I, Adrian O'Math of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, on the 22nd day of January 2019, do hereby recognize Ms. Julie Waters in the French School of Music for educational, cultural, economic contributions made in the City of Plainfield in the Plainfield City, and call upon all in attendance to join me in celebrating the years of dedicated service, passion, integrity, and musical expertise experienced by all who learned and played in this impressive establishment. The Mayor Adrian O'Math will present this proclamation to Ms. Julie Waters.
It is with great pleasure that I present to you with this as a token of our recognition of the great work that you've done in the city. And there's so much in this proclamation that we almost ran out of ink. But there's no one more deserving than this recognition, and so we thank you.
Well, thank you, it's not a red carpet, but like the Academy Awards, I'm going to limit my little speech to four minutes, I timed it. Now let's see that I don't... On behalf of the French School of Music and those who gave their lives to enrich the lives of their students with musical education, I am honored to receive this recognition as presented by Mayor O'Math and the city council this evening. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I would like to express public gratitude to Wendy Romano, Carol Ann Chernick, Gladys Kitchell, Tara Busas, Rebecca Diaz, Eileen Sauer, and Chung Chang for continuing the legacy of the French School of Music. One thing I have learned over these past five years of retirement is when we unite, much can be accomplished. There is still much that can be done in the line of music education, even when the brick and mortar building at 210 West H Street no longer functions as a school. The French School of Music system brought over from the Paris Conservatory in 1927 by Yvonne and Eileen is already online for free. It is entitled Fundamentals of Piano Practice, written by Chung Chang, and a first edition of the Solfège Teaching Guide, written by Eileen Sauer, a former student of Yvonne's and teacher of solfège, is available on Amazon. I have a vision of a Plainfield Cultural Center where the Plainfield Symphony, the oldest community symphony in the state of New Jersey, can have a home, not one they have to pay for, one that has been given in gratitude for what they have given to the Plainfield community for nearly 100 years, where they can broaden their outreach to the Plainfield Public Schools to include the Hispanic orchestral music program called El Sistema, combined with the French Paris Conservatory method of solfège, which prepares anyone to read music as easily as you read a book, where students of all ages, levels, aspirations, cultures can experience a full spectrum of music education, where a junior Plainfield Symphony can be born and flourish, where money is no longer used as an excuse to hold anyone back. And I know of a possible grant that could be awarded to the Plainfield Symphony to get a program such as this started, and am willing to help facilitate this vision before leaving New Jersey at the end of April of this year, to be with my musical family who have patiently waited for me for five years. I have no family here. I invite the mayor, the council, the Plainfield Symphony, they don't know about this yet, the Plainfield Public Schools, the Plainfield Heritage and Cultural Commission, the Plainfield Foundation, the Plainfield Arts Council, and all Plainfield citizens who desire the best music education for their children and grandchildren, to ask, what can we bring to the table to get this done? Thank you.
Please share your opinion.
I'm glad.
We'll work on it.
All right. Sounds like a promise.
Other communications this evening, the honor of the Mayor Adrian O'Math have presented the following nominees for vice consent from the government body. Martin J. Mandel, Plainfield Fire Director, Michelle Brand Linus, Panyway Commissioner, Marlene Powell, Ultimate Number Two, Panyway Commissioner, and Ron Scott Bag, Ultimate Number Two, Panyway Commissioner. And that includes all the communications from the mayor.
The 2019 Plainfield City Council Committee assignments were distributed to all council members via email and are on file for public inspection in the city clerk's office. We have no ordinances on second reading to consider. We now come to public comments. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for the public comments, limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes before it's now open. Seeing no one comes to the floor, may I have a motion to close public comments?
So be it. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, on the air, any questions on resolutions R.042 through... and 19 through R.04419? Okay, here again, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Will the business administrator please present his items for consideration this evening?
Yes, good evening, Council President. We present... I'm presenting resolutions R.045-19 through R.046-19.
Are there any questions from the council? May I have a motion to approve resolutions 04519 to 4619?
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Will Corporation Council please present your items for consideration this evening?
Thank you, Council President. The Corporation Council's office offers resolutions 4719 through 5719. At your request, Council President, I'll just give a brief overview of the resolutions that are on for this evening. The first item is a workers' compensation settlement, which was discussed previously to the December closed session, that is now finalized as of before your final vote. There are 10 contracts for attorneys, over this year down from 19 last year, as well as the number has decreased from 385,000 last year to 240 as a total number. The areas of discipline are labor, litigation, tax, redevelopment, and bond council. And the contracts range from a high of 65,000 for certain vendors to 5,000 for other vendors. Certainly willing to answer any questions, all of these vendors have been used in previous years in their disciplines. Questions were asked, do we intend on additional legal contracts for this year? As of this moment, my office, we believe that this is the full complement of attorneys that we will need for the year. Granted, as we do not know litigation, we're generally in a defensive posture as the city, we are not complaining, we are generally defended, we don't know, and don't have a crystal ball as to what our future may hold. However, based on litigation and our history and what we have currently outstanding, we believe that this is the appropriate complement of attorneys. I hope you'll be ready to answer any questions of Council President. Thank you, Council President.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Storch?
Yes, there are three of these resolutions refer to property abandonment actions, and so my question is, what can we expect in the way of action in this year of 2019 as far as items coming to the city council regarding abandoned properties, in relation to our abandoned property ordinance?
Well, thank you, Council President, I can't speak specifically to abandoned properties, but what I will say is that one of our attorneys, one of our tax attorneys, is solely dedicated to pursuing foreclosure actions on behalf of the city. So that deals with any property owner that fails to pay their property taxes over a certain period of time, we have that ability to foreclose on that property and then hopefully get it back on the tax rolls very quickly. Many of those properties are abandoned, so although it doesn't deal specifically with the abandoned property ordinance, we do have dedicated council just for the purpose of pursuing foreclosures, and they continue to do that for roughly four years now. As far as abandoned properties, I don't know if I can answer that question.
I can, I can address that, Council President, if you may. Yes, Councilman Storch, as you know, the administration has made a commitment over two years ago in pursuing the abandoned property ordinance, and that has continued to improve, our list continues to be redefined on a monthly basis. Our registration fees has increased significantly, and we have seen a lot of property owners coming to improve their properties. So we have seen a lot of movement in the properties. I don't have specific numbers, but the administration still has a commitment to continue to pursue the abandoned property ordinance and continue to pursue those that are not by invited by the ordinance that, you know, we will eventually move into foreclosure with those properties. So the commitment's still there, it is an ongoing commitment that it will continue. And I can tell you that we're going to be able to do away with all the abandoned properties because, as you know, every time we take five or 10 properties out of the list, you know, next month we find that there's three or four coming into the registration. So the commitment's still there from the administration.
Yeah, and I commend the administration for starting to move on this, I know it's a lengthy process and it's an extensive list of abandoned properties, and so far I think the effect seems to be that it motivates absentee property owners to avoid the consequences of the ordinance and actually start working, fixing up their properties. But I assume that at some point we will be taking properties, because not all outcomes are that good. So I would appreciate for the administration to give us a more detailed report on this sometime this year, so that we can find out where things are at, because I know there's something like a two-year process to really get to the end of it before we could actually take a property back. But I would like to know what we can expect for the future, you know, as far as carrying out this ordinance.
Absolutely, that's a fair request, and we will bring a report at a later time during the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions, careful.
I have a question. For the benefit of the public, can you just explain why there are like multiple contracts that seem to be repeating, like we have multiple litigation and defense?
Absolutely, well, some of the disciplines, although you may be a labor attorney, there are many facets to labor council. Specifically, within labor, there is negotiation and collective bargaining agreements, there may be day-to-day advising on personnel matters. Also, being that we are a civil service municipality, any form of major discipline creates a hearing, and then we need attorneys to then prosecute those charges. So being that there are multiple disciplines, or multiple facets, I guess, of being a labor attorney, we have traditionally split that up amongst two to three firms. In this case, we have three firms. As we said, we have tax attorneys, we have foreclosure, tax appeals, and in one case we do have a conflict tax council due to our tax attorney having a conflict on several matters. Litigation, we have two firms for that same purpose. Sometimes it is legally possible for one firm to have all the defendants in a case, and therefore be more than one firm. So, when you do see more than one firm, doesn't necessarily mean that they're overlapping doing the same work.
May I have a motion to approve resolutions R.4719 through 5719?
So be it. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Will the Department of Finance please present their items to be considered proceeding?
Thank you, Council President, Tracy Bennett for Director West for the Department of Finance, representing resolutions 58-19 through 70-19, and how does the Department of Finance have any questions they have?
Do any members of council have questions?
I have a question, R.
Just a minute, I'll let you go. Councilmember Sumati?
Yeah, so Mr. Bennett, I don't know if they can answer this. With R.5019, I'm just curious, what enrollment has been like with this program?
I'm not quite sure what the enrollment is, but I see that Director West does want to increase the number of classes and the number of participants, and so from maximum I believe that it has been pretty good.
Councilwoman Bennett?
Councilwoman Sumati, just so that you know, we have, I don't have the exact numbers, but we have exceeded the expectations under this training for 2018. And what this resolution is going to be doing is providing additional funding for certification, and the 2019 is targeting 29 residents for, I'm sorry, 24 residents for Cisco certification, as well as 72 residents for digital literacy training. So that is what is 2019, but I can tell you that the numbers for 2019, we exceeded those numbers, and there's a waiting list of residents trying to get into this training program.
Thank you.
That was my question.
Yes, same with resolution, we're being asked to approve $96,000 of expenditures, so I'm asking the administration to give us more details on these things. For example, I'm still not what our target is for 2019, but we did this in 2018, so not only how many were enrolled, but how many completed, and do we have any information on whether any of those residents actually got jobs? I think that's the kind of information that the council would really need to feel comfortable voting on such a resolution.
I don't have that information for you. So I'm sorry, we have a breakdown of what this $96,000 represents, which is basically the trainers and the support, our registered support of the union, and also the rental space. But as far as the number of participants and the number of ones that actually graduated and unemployed, I don't have that breakdown for you. So next we will get it for you.
Thank you.
Mr. President? As Mr. West did last year, he will again provide you and all the members of the council with a detailed report on how successful this program has been and how beneficial it has been to the city. And we continue to focus on providing training to the residents of our city so that they can be prepared, or be better prepared, for the opportunities that are out there in this the 21st century. And so we will do what we've already done, and that is provide a detailed report on Mr. West's return.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just a couple of comments, one regarding R.5919. I think this training does represent, does represent an opportunity for many of our residents to get trained. A Cisco certification is the standard for IT certification. So for residents out there that are unemployed or underemployed or looking for a career change, this type of certification is something that could be very useful, and it's something that the city provides free of charge for its residents. I remember West, Director West, speaking last year, but this is a very rigorous program, it takes almost a year to complete. So in terms of the numbers, there may not be the numbers there in terms of the graduates because I'm not sure that the first class has even had enough time to finish, but I'm sure those numbers will come soon. But because of the rigorousness of the program, we do expect that some may not be able to complete it for one reason or another, but this is certainly an excellent program for those who are able to take advantage of it. Also had a brief comment regarding the sale of the four municipal health tax certificates, which also think is, as a real estate, an attorney who practices in real estate, you know, one of the things that you look at when looking at the health and vibrancy of a city's real estate market is the interest of residents or investors in purchasing its tax sales. For cities that no one wants to live in, these are hard for the city to recover the monies for unpaid taxes. So it sort of represents a vibrancy, a underlying buoyancy of the city that people are interested in investing in our city in this way to help bring up our city. So these are good indicators for our city.
Yeah, R.61, my question on that, that's the one for $1.1 million.
What member, I'm sorry, I missed your, what did you say?
61. So, and I think this is a repeat, this is a renewal, a contract renewal with PJEF. So what, just to detail if any, what the changes are between this new contract and the one that we had for 2018?
Yeah, so again, this is a continuation of a three-year contract, so previously the PJEF agreement is a three-year contract, we in our third year. So this payment represents our third year payment, you know, to the PJEF. What has changed is that by being members of the PJEF, a lot of the training that municipalities have been identifying, the lack of training in a lot of municipalities is increasing. So for instance, it's a, in order for us to bring down our workman's compensation and litigation, so to tell you the truth, there is a movement right now with the PJEF of training staff, training employees in safety concerns, and just protocols from all different angles. So that's what, you know, we get out of it, besides the reduced rates that we get from the insurance. But again, this is the third year of a three-year contract that was approved. But again, this is a, this is the third year of a three-year contract that was approved previously by the city council.
Okay. Are the answers sufficient for now for civil, as a block?
I have one more question.
You did, okay.
On resolution, um, sixty, zero sixty-five dash nineteen, have we done our due diligence to make sure that, um, all those tax certificate sales are okay to sell? Because we have to do a cancellation in zero sixty-four dash nineteen.
Yes, the, the one that we canceled, it was this guy who that is landlocked by city-owned property. So it's better for us to keep that property merged with our own lot, and that's why we're canceling that sale. But yes, the due diligence has been done and it's better for us to sell these tax sales. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question again. Are we satisfied that we can move this as a block or shall we?
So be it.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Will the Department of Public Works please present their items to be considered this evening?
I have the Council President, I have the City Council. I have four resolutions for you, the Department of Works, versus R O seven one nineteen through R O seven four dash nineteen. Any questions?
Questions for the council?
I have a question about resolution zero seventy-three dash nineteen. Um, while I think it's great that the city has, City Hall will have generators to keep the city up and running, uh, my question is about the safety concerns of staff. So will there be an expectation that as long as City Hall has power, staff is expected to report to work in a situation like superstorm safety or something? Like, how would we handle that?
Absolutely. Purposes to pack up generators just for those purposes. Uh, City Hall is a fallout shelter, so we need backup services for that. And, uh, this would be something that's really safety, cost-effective and beneficial to all the residents of the city. And this will continue the power warning. Basically, it's something as large as hurricane Sandy. Just back to generators, should have been a boost a long time ago, but this is something to be beneficial to the city as a whole.
Other questions? They have a motion to move?
So be it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So be it.
Who has a motion?
Oh, okay, you did.
Good.
I can't hear you. Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Will the Department of Economic Development please present their items to be considered this evening?
Good evening, council. I have a resolution seventy-five dash nineteen through eighty-three dash nineteen to present to council tonight. Resolution seventy-six dash nineteen, I've given the clerk a replacement resolution, uh, because we noticed that a few of the lots weren't on the resolution. And we did do a better job of formatting where we have the block and the address side by side. Uh, so, the map is cracked and remains the same. Uh, but resolution seventy-six nineteen, I did give the clerk a replacement resolution. Do I have any question?
I'm gonna hold the second until everybody gets whatever she's passing out in their hands.
Yes. Are there any questions on resolution seventy-five dash nineteen through eighty-three dash nineteen?
Yeah, I have a comment on seventy-five. I want to give, uh, kudos to the Economic Development folks. Because, I mean, I think in the past, our proposed redevelopment areas were kind of small. We're thinking big, so, you know, we're really going for that whole area, and I think that makes a lot of sense, so. Also on seven, on seventy-six, I think because of the size of the map, I could not open it on my, uh, computer. But I understand there are copies of that map available?
Yes.
So pick it up. Oh, no, I have a blank sheet.
Oh, there must be one. Sorry about that.
Guys, um, council, do you have two? Do you have two methods?
Well, just one.
Between the two, you have two. We need to share.
So we have to share?
Yeah, okay.
No, we're not sharing.
I have an extra copy.
That's all right, they can share. Okay, uh, Councilman Storage, you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, so, so now, I'm looking at this map for the first time, and it's also an ambitious proposal to be developed. Which again, being by train station, I think makes a lot of sense. But if you could just orient us, because I'm not sure, talk the picture particularly on West Seventh Street, like what's, what's there? Let's be, what's the, um, area included?
Okay, uh, so if we, um, orient here, you'll see that the boundary is West Seventh here, all the way to, uh, really West Fourth Street and East Fourth Street. And then from Madison Avenue to Wachong Avenue. And this is area we're calling T O D D South. It is south of, uh, the train station, the Plainfield Train Station. Uh, you will notice that there are a lot of auto body parts, uh, auto shops in this area, as well as vacant, uh, buildings. And so, it's right behind the train station, uh, Cleveland. Let me look at where Cleveland is. Uh, Cleveland Avenue is included, which includes the Y over here, Cleveland and Wachong. So it does include the YMCA property as well. So across from, if you are Wachong, across from City Hall, Wachong, uh, then you would go over to Seventh Street, to Madison, and back to, uh, West Third and West Fourth and East Fourth Street.
Okay, includes the shopping center on the corner of Seventh and Park?
Yes. It's a comprehensive look at the area, a real door redevelopment plan. It's a non-combinational redevelopment plan. So as properties, uh, get acquired, become available, uh, they'll subject, uh, if we designate this as a redevelopment area and then have a redevelopment plan, they would be subject to provisions of the redevelopment plan.
Do we have any idea when this will come back to us for approval?
Um, I am hoping April or May. Uh, we have developers, uh, interested in this area and beginning to assemble properties. And so I'm hoping that this will come back to us no later than May here.
Thank you.
So I have two questions. Um, the first question is, what are, what's the criteria for determining areas of redevelopment?
Uh, they're either blighted areas or vacant and abandoned properties. Uh, so, uh, you look at the properties in the area, and if you have a large number of blighted properties, underutilized properties or vacant properties.
Okay, and my second question is for resolution zero seventy-seven dash nineteen. Um, in the, in the resolution, it references Exhibit A and, um, Exhibit A being attached. But I don't know what Exhibit A is.
It's the actual redevelopment agreement that's attached to it. Uh, the resolution amends the redevelopment agreement. The reason we are amending the redevelopment agreement, HMFA, which is the financing source for this project through low-income housing tax credits, has requested that the unit mix be changed to meet the funding. And so the unit mix is the number of bedrooms, uh, that are in the project. Uh, in the case of seventy-seven, we still have a total of ninety units. Uh, but we're going from, from forty-two one bedrooms to eighteen. We're going from forty-three two bedrooms to fifty-four, so that number is increasing. And we're going from five bedrooms, three bedrooms, to eighteen. So the unit mix is what is changed at the request of HMFA, the funding source for this project. And the developer is to close, uh, the mortgage with HMFA in March. Thank you.
Yeah, so just a final question too. Will construction start in March and then how long are they expecting?
Uh, we are expecting construction to start in the May timeframe. We will be holding a community meeting, uh, for residents, uh, probably in the March timeframe, uh, that will be open to residents who are interested in jobs on the project, as well as local vendors interested, uh, in supplying goods and services to the project.
And then expect the completion?
Oh, uh, I would expect it would complete in eighteen months.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is there a place or a website, uh, where residents can get information regarding what will be built or if they wanted to, uh, apply for, uh, what will be there?
We would be providing a link for employment opportunities, uh, so there would be a website with a link.
Okay. What about for people who want to live there actually in a month?
Uh, we can make that available. The developer usually has a, a website put up, uh, probably just prior to completion, uh, but we can request, uh, that they do it sooner. They're here to sign the audience.
Okay. Here we go, other questions? Can we, uh, may I have a motion to approve resolutions seventy-one, uh, am I on the right part now?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, eighty-three, right? Yes, seventy-five nineteen through eighty-three, like two. So be it.
Second, but also a question I'm gonna have to ask. And that's on, uh, resolution eighty. This is the Green Brook, uh, multi-use trail.
Right.
Um, can we get an update on, like, uh, what's, what's happening with that? It's, it looks like, is it all engineered or is there actual, like, work that would be done on it?
Uh, this is the engineering portion. Last year, you approved the award of a contract to do the construction work. And so we had to go back and, um, increase the engineering portion of it. Uh, but they've been out, they've been doing surveys and all of that. Uh, but I forgot the name of the construction company that you approved.
But this is work that's gonna be done this year, this spring?
This year, this spring.
This will be the first section that will be open, which is exciting.
It is exciting. We're still trying to get more money for the trail.
Thank you.
Okay, so we moved it properly second. Um, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Will the Department of Communications and Technology please present their item?
Sure, Council President, I will be doing that. Uh, Department of Communications and Technology present resolution of eighty-four dash nineteen, uh, for your consideration.
Are there any questions for the council?
Just one. Uh, Mrs. Hancher, do you know in terms of, like, the broadcasting, where it'd be straight through? Is it online, is it city website?
It will be, uh, it will be broadcast both, both online and through our, the, our local channel.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions? All is in favor? Oh, second of which?
So be it.
Second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Will the Department of Health and Social Services please present their items for consideration?
Yes, I would present them on behalf of our, uh, Director, he, he, he's still today. But, uh, the Department of Health and Social Services presenting resolution oh eighty-five nineteen and oh eighty-six nineteen for your consideration.
Any questions for the council?
So, resolution zero eighty-six dash nineteen, are they going to be providing TV testing to the community?
Uh, no. In the event that, uh, there is a, um, a tuberculosis epidemic, they will handle all our testing, all our education, and they will handle anything that has to do with, with tuberculosis. So this is not an educational, uh, uh, award. It's a, uh, in, in the event that, God forbid, we have an epidemic in the city. They will handle that for us.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
So be it.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Storage and our, uh, mine, did you vote?
I did.
Oh, okay. Uh, we have no new items, so we now come to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC twenty nineteen oh one?
MC twenty nineteen, National Orders and Ordinances of City of Plainfield and County Union, authorizing a second amendment to the Financial Agreement with South Second Street redevelopment or renewal to an LC with respect to certain properties identified as block one twelve, lot nineteen oh three, all city's official tax maps, commonly known as seven thirty through seven fifty, South Central.
Can the administration please give a brief explanation of this ordinance?
Uh, yes, this is the companion ordinance to the redevelopment agreement for the South Second Street project. Uh, we're amending, again, the unit mix. And in this case, the construction schedule is being amended, uh, in the financial agreement.
Are there any questions for the council?
Is this, is this one of those projects that is, that has a payment with taxes?
Uh, yes, that you've already approved. This, uh, is an ordinance amending that approved financial agreement uh, to change the unit mix, meaning the description of the project, as well as the, uh, construction schedule.
Does it change the, uh, revenues to the city from the, from the title?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
I need a motion to allow.
Oh, that, motion, that's right.
I need a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Armani?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Storage?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Losrass?
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC twenty nineteen dash oh two?
MC twenty nineteen, National Two, is an ordinance amending the status of salaries and wages about person park fourteen, chapter eleven, and as the code of state of Oklahoma, New Jersey, nineteen seventy-one. And this is a salary amendment for the Plainfield Fire Officers Association.
Can the administration please give a brief explanation of this ordinance?
Yes, uh, Council President, absolutely. This is, um, simply ratifying the contract with the Plainfield Fire Officers Association. Um, as, uh, as the council may recall, we did all the, uh, union contracts, uh, they've been approved and ratified. And this is the last one that we have, and this is, this will set the, the new parameters for salary increases, benefits for the, uh, fire officers for the next, uh, actually for two thousand and eighteen through, uh, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. For years.
Are there any questions for the members of the council? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Armani?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Storage?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Losrass?
Yes.
Matt Adrian, this is ordinance six three, adopted on first reading.
All right, Mr. Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC twenty nineteen dash zero three?
MC twenty nineteen oh three is an ordinance amending the schedule of salaries and wages about person park fourteen, chapter eleven, and as the code of state of Plainfield, New Jersey, and this is the health officer salary. And this is the health officer salary ban.
Can the administration please give a brief explanation of this ordinance?
Yes, absolutely, council president. This ordinance is just establishing a salary ban for the health officer. It's not creating a new position. It's just simply cleaning up and setting up a salary. We never had a salary ban for this position. So this is just setting that new salary ban for this position.
Questions from the council? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Storage, NC 2019, National Three, Councilmember Armani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Storage?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Loser.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Mr. Clerk, will you please read ordinance NC 2019-04? By title?
NC 2019-04 is an ordinance leaving Chapter Two, and as quoted in City of Plainfield, Sections 244, 283, 296, 297, 2971, 2972, 2973, 2974, 2975, 2976, 2978, 2103, 2104, and 2131, admitting Sections 293, admitting salary ranges for business administrator and departmental agents.
Can the administration please give an explanation?
Yes, thank you, council president. As everyone may remember, last year, the administration took on the task after our charter revision to reorganize the departments of city government. In the midst of that process, many folks who came to the microphone, to the public, thought that this was an expansion of government and referenced many positions that were, that appeared to be obsolete. And as we said numerous times throughout that debate, that there was no expansion, merely a reorganization. We've now gone back to honor that commitment. The mayor's asked us to go back through the code and eliminate any position which we believed would no longer, which has not been filled, and there's no intention to fill going forward. So the ordinance before you is a reduction of many positions and provisions in the code that we believe are now obsolete. So there are many referenced. I think all the department heads went through. It was a collaborative effort to eliminate those positions from the code going forward. So there are many positions that were old, for instance. And they're all referenced in the ordinance. Additionally, we have lowered the minimum range on the salary ban for both the business administrator and the department head. So previously, the minimum salary, as was drafted, was 115,000. We requested that that number be lowered to 95,000. This does not affect anyone's current salary, but affects any future people who may be eligible for that position. So those are the, that is the crux of the ordinance before you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Yeah, just one. Well, first, thank you to the administration for cleaning up that way-outloaded ordinance with all those positions that don't exist anymore. So that's good. The, my question is on, at the very end, right underneath the salary ban, it says the pension will be adjusted annually consistent with the consumer price index. Is that something new? Or is that, is that, that's always been in place?
Yes, that has always been the case, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So follow-up to Councilman Storage's question. It's going to be adjusted annually. So what happens once it hits the maximum? That's it? Or you want to revisit this?
No, the, the, the salary ban, as is, once it can continue to be adjusted beyond the maximum, if we were to get, if we were at the maximum, it could still be adjusted, subject to the consumer price index. However, currently, no one is at that grade.
I will now entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading.
So be it.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Armani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman McCray?
Yes.
Councilman Storage?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke?
Yes.
Council President Loser.
Yes.
That is your end. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading and a public hearing on the ordinances as we're considering the police and X-ray reading played at the council on Monday, February 11, 2019.
We have now come to the section for general comments. A total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now open.
Good evening. Johnny Pritchett, formerly of 723 Arlington Avenue in Plainfield, now of 42-44 West Tully Street, Cranford. Several things I would like to address the council. We need our police and firefighters. We have to back them up as they do their jobs. Their jobs are dangerous enough without trying to, without trying to undermine their rights and undermine the authority they have to do their jobs. They're out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Secondly, we need to back our soldiers, salesmen, rings, coastguards, and airmen. They're doing their utmost to defend our freedom. Some of Plainfield's sons and daughters aren't in the military services right now. We failed to back up our men during the war in Vietnam. And during that time, 16 men from Plainfield lost their lives fighting for our country. When the survivors came back, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. It's just as bad as that other N-word, which of course I will not use. The poor brave soldier there despise. Your town is a stranger. Remember, Jesus country stay in day in our danger. And lastly, we need to reactivate the hospital in Plainfield, Bielefeld. We need to reactivate Bielefeld because we need that hospital, and we need that hospital very, very badly. What if another line of attack occurs? We'll need that hospital very badly. And it's a national security issue. The sooner we reactivate Bielefeld, the better off we all would be. Going with some clear!
Saying no one else coming forward. May I have a motion to close general comments?
So be it.
Second.
All those in favor? May I now have a motion for a general?
Before me, a general.
I'm sorry, okay.
Before me, a general. I just wanted to thank all of our leaders. I'm very glad you're going to join us this evening. And also congratulate our new buyer director. Many of us have the chance to meet with him, and we're impressed by his credentials. We know that he'll provide the leadership that we do need to be, you know, one of the best fire departments in the state. So I do congratulate you.
Does anybody else have a comment? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.